Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting of the North Little Rock Planning Commission to order. Mr. Rivas, would you please call the roll?
President.
Belasco.
Here.
Chambers.
Present.
Dietz.
Here.
Foster. Phillips.
Present.
White.
Here.
Chairman Clifton.
Here. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. To approve those not present.
Motion made and seconded. We excuse those not present, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move right into the approval of our minutes of our previous meetings. You have been supplied with a copy of the minutes of the previous meetings. Are there any additions or corrections at this time?
Two for approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. They be approved as submitted, all in... Or would you please call the roll?
President. Oh, yes.
Belasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. We'll move right into our Development Review Committee.
Hey, Phillips is here.
I'm sorry.
Phillips is here.
Okay.
Phillips is here.
Junior Phillips, uh, joined us, thank you. Development Review Committee, Mr. Don Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Development Review Committee met and considered item SD 2020-23, Catcher &amp; Company Edition Lot 1 Preliminary Platte Site Plan Review of a New Building at 1601 West 5th Street. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 10 and subsections, and the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. It be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners on this application? Then we'll vote on the application as submitted. Please call the roll.
Banks. Belasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. If you'll see Mr. Spencer, he can, uh, tell you what to do next. Thank you.
The next item is item B, SD 2020-24 Faulkner Crossing Phase 11.
Thoughts 533 through 562?
Preliminary plan of a residential subdivision. The applicant was present and agreed to items 11, uh, well, 1 through 11 and subsections, and the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I would like to welcome Mr. Foster, joining us also at this time. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Are there any comments from any of the commissioners on this application? Then would you please call the roll?
Banks. Belasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. We'll get with Mr. Spencer, he can tell you where to go next. Thank you.
Item C is SD 2020-25 Wells Ridge Edition Lot 1 Preliminary Platte Site Plan Review of a Convenience Store with Fuel Pumps Located at the Northeast Corner of Highway 161 and I-40. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 12 and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. It be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? Would you please call the roll?
Banks.
Yes.
Belasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
White. White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Application did pass. See Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next would be. Thank you.
The last item for consideration is SD 2020-26 White Oak Crossing Subdivision Lots 1 through 76 Preliminary Platte of a Residential Subdivision. The applicant was present, agreed to items 1 through 11 and subsections, and the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, would you please call the roll?
Banks.
Yes.
Belasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you where to go next. Thank you.
That concludes the Development Review Committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. We'll move right into our public hearing. First item today is rezone case number 2020-7 to rezon from an R4 zoning classification to a proposed C4 classification to recognize an existing commercial building. Is the applicant here today? Okay. Has there been, uh, any comments from any of the neighbors on this application?
No, we have not received any phone calls or emails.
Staff recommendation is approval on this. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? For or against? On the application, ask Mr. Chambers?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a question for staff. I can't tell from these drawings that there's a fence between the applicant and the church. R4 to R2, is a fence required, screening, any kind of bear, uh...
Come on up, would you be able to answer that, if there's a fence there?
Hi, Stacy Medlock with Remax Elite. There is not a fence between the church and the backside of the building. Do we need a fence?
Well, it depends on whether or not one's required. It's different zones, and that's why I'm asking if a fence is needed. Sean, do you know, R2 to R4?
The...
Any kind of screen or anything like that?
There is a green space between the two properties, and a parking area.
Between the two, there wouldn't be one in, between R2 and R4.
Okay, that's what I need to know, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on this application? Please call the roll.
Thank you.
Banks.
Yes.
Belasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you where to go next. Thank you. Next item is item number 2 to rezone case number 2020-8 to rezon property from an R1 to an R4 to allow for a second dwelling unit at 9 Baker Circle. Is the applicant here? Please come up and give us your name.
Tell what I need. Um, hi, my name is Catherine Augustus. I'm the one that purchased the property at 9 Baker Circle. My purpose for being here today is the she shed that I'm building in the back of my home. The she shed is to be used for crafts, a storage space, and slash a realtor's office. Um, I'm a very avid...
I'm sorry, what kind of office?
Realtor. Because of COVID-19, I sort of meet my clients in that space also, would like to. Um, I'm a very avid, um, Facebook Marketplace seller. I sell a lot of things on Facebook. So I need, um, the space to prep my items. With COVID-19 being on the rise, I have to do a lot of sanitation, a lot of washing of the items to protect myself as well as my family. I do not bring those into my home. Um, and also to protect the person that I'm selling to. My she shed, I think the reason we're here today is because I was wanting to put water in it, and that was my purpose, wanting the water.
Okay. Thank you. Is this, uh, I'm looking at the picture, is there an existing structure there now that you're wanting to add to?
Yes.
What size is the existing structure there now?
Uh, the existing structure is, uh, it is 12 by 10.
Okay, and was it a carport or garage?
It was just a storage area, with no electricity.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Rivas?
Can you state your name for the record?
My name is Anthony Wimberly. I'm the project manager, helping out with the project.
Thank you. Chairman Clifton.
Mr. Spencer?
Not yet, not yet.
Just a minute, ma'am. Okay, all right, we'll, we'll speak up, thank you.
Like a portable fan? We'll turn that off. Not, then, uh...
Mr. Spencer?
We, uh, didn't, we didn't know anything about this office until just now, so that was not legal added or anything about it, so that is not part of this request right now. So that would be something that we would have to add and re-advertise and that kind of, you know, let the neighbors know and everything, so...
Okay.
So the request right now is for a second dwelling unit.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll let you...
Go ahead.
All right, this was never a second dwelling. The only reason we're here is because there's nothing in the city bylaws that allow for water to be added to an external structure without rezoning. That's the only reason we're here. We're only adding water to a separate building for the pri, for the, uh, what's the word for it? For the purposes she just mapped out as what she's using it for. It's not a second dwelling.
When, when someone originally came in and talked to us, they used the word "mother-in-law quarters." So we're basing it off of what we were originally told was, that it was, it would be used for a mother-in-law's quarter. So we've got to look at it as, it's not what she's going to use it for, it's what is it? So what, what is the structure? So if, if it has a restroom and a bedroom and water and electricity, it could be, in the future, be rented out.
Okay, I understand that. I'm the one that actually sent the email, and I said "mother-in-law suite, uh, aka she shed." I was assuming that can be the same thing, so that was my mistake. It's a she shed which is, in this case, used for arts and crafts, her business and her real estate, uh, clients, and storing her items she sells on Facebook inside. It has no, no, uh, intention of being used for an income-producing rental space.
And, and that's all fine, as long as she owns it, but we, it gets sold, and then it would be the next person to come in. So we, we look at it as what is it? So, you know, is it, it's either a storage unit, or a storage shed, or it could, in the future, it could be rented out.
I completely understand what you're saying, uh, like your, your sister city, Little Rock, uh, completely different process. Uh, the only thing that, with Little Rock is like, okay, uh, is there a 220 in there? No. Okay, is there any gas in there? No. Um, so we just add, we're just adding water. So it's nothing we can do or say here outside of, uh, we can say, okay, in the real estate contract, when she sells the property, we can just put in a real estate contract, the, uh, shed outside is not to be used for any type of rental property. That's the only thing we can do, but we just need water in the facility. There may not be anything set up for you all to say that, hey, this is, um, we're just adding water and it's not going to be zoned for anything else other than a residential space. That's one residential space versus two residential spaces. We just don't have anything in the bylaws that allow that. That's the only reason we're here.
Yeah, the, the city wouldn't be part to a, whatever's in the real estate contracts, so that's, that's an agreement between two, two persons, not with the city, so it wouldn't be anything that we could enforce.
I completely understand, but unfortunately that...
Excuse me, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Did I understand you to say that, that you're trying to put bathroom facilities in this building as well?
Well, just water, and, uh, just water with a sink, and it's going to have a toilet, because there's only one toilet in, oh, I mean, one bathroom is out of the house, so when she's in there, so she can use the restroom. Yes.
Okay.
Sorry? No, there's no, there's no meters for the water, there's no meters for the electricity. It's going to be shared with the house, so of course...
Go ahead and give us your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, so he is asked, uh, there will be metered separately, and you're saying no?
No meter separately. We've actually already had a rough inspection approved for electrical, and it's, uh, sharing the electricity from the home, it's not metered separately, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, is there someone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Please come up and give us your name, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Michelle Holt. My address is, just lost it, 5721 Alta Vista. I am the Amboy Neighborhood Association President. We, the neighbors, only received the letter about this on June 1st, so we didn't have a lot of time to prepare. We are not wanting it to be rezoned to an R4 for obvious reasons, because it can have multi-dwellings. Our neighborhood is not a multi-dwelling neighborhood. It's all single-family homes, uh, excuse me, multi-dwelling homes are not conducive to Amboy, and our concern is what it would impact in the future if other people could do this, if duplexes could be built on empty lots and things like that. So we request that y'all do not approve it. We were also told that it was going to contain a shower, so I don't know if that has changed or not, but that's what one of the neighbors was told. We do have a small petition that was done with the neighbors surrounding that area, the Lee Baker and Jay Circle.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
So the property right, uh, I guess it would be north of this, or behind this property, shows another, uh, small building there. Do you know what's in that building?
We, on the same lot?
No, no, it's the, it's the lot in the house behind...
Is it number 400?
402.
Yes, 400 and 402.
Norman, I think that house has a pool.
I'm sorry, Ms. Belasco, what?
Norman, uh, believe that house that you're speaking of has a pool. I know they did, and that outbuilding, I suspect, has pool equipment and possibly, but it is strictly storage.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Chambers?
Uh, yes, Mr. Spencer. Reluctantly, I don't support R4, because it's spot zoning in the middle of a neighborhood. But is there, I also hear the plea of the applicant in terms of wanting to continue her business and, and with COVID-19 and all that. Is there anything under our special or conditional uses that would allow an expanded storage shed for that purpose, so that if they violated the conditional use in terms of habitation or rental or anything like that, the city could enforce that?
We, uh, as far as the conditional use, we can't create new conditional uses, so it's, it's, what's in the book says a C for conditional use, we're stuck with that, so we can't create a new category.
There are no conditional uses that cover this instance, is what you're telling me?
Correct, yeah. And for a special use, we're not to do a special use for new construction.
No special uses for new construction?
New construction. So we can do a special use for an existing situation, but not allow new construction to be associated with the special use.
Could the special use be attached to the existing storage shed, and then they, and we allow it to be expanded?
No, that, that would be, to allow a non-conforming use, then, to expand.
The storage shed is non-conforming?
If it's turned into a she shed.
Yeah. It's currently what?
It's a shed right now.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve White.
Mr. White?
Yeah, let me ask a question. So the request comes in for R1 to R4 to allow for a second dwelling, but technically, they've said that this isn't going to be a second home, it's going to be a she shed, like the one that burns down on TV for the insurance company. She's going to work out there, which is also. So in what they're requesting, they don't really need to request it as a second dwelling, it just needs, or does it even need to be a request? I mean, if you want to build a structure in your backyard to do your hobby or to work out of that has electricity and water in it, that's per, per, is, is okay. So I think what, what we're hung up on is why does it even have to be changed to an R4? Why can't it just be an R1, and she built it? And she built her she shed, you know?
Okay, Mr. Spencer?
So the, to answer your question, Steve, is, is, it's what it could be used as in the future, so she, they sell the house, and the next user could rent it out, because it has a restroom and electricity and a bedroom. So if, if there were, if she were not to add a restroom to it, there'd be no issue. So, so it's, that, that would eliminate it being used in the future as a, as a residence. So if there was no, no bathroom in it, I mean, you could have running water to the sink or something, but not, once you put a toilet and possibly a shower in there, it becomes, you can rent it out.
All right, and, and if I could ask this question, so if I build a swimming pool in my backyard and I have a swimming pool house, then technically I can't have a bathroom in it, is that correct?
If you were to build a, a changing area that had, you know, a shower and a bathroom, but just, you know, if it started having a kitchen and, uh, bedroom and other types, then it becomes a second unit. Yes, so if...
So why wouldn't we just leave, why wouldn't we just leave it as an R1 and ask her, because I didn't hear the part that she was going to have a bedroom in it, I just heard the part that that's where she was going to work from, and she needed water, and as far as the toilet, I didn't know that rule, so, you know, maybe if she could just live without having the toilet there, then we wouldn't have to be going through any of this at all, is that correct?
That, that is correct.
So y'all might ask her if she would consider that, or the young man, that's, I can't see, but the young man, uh, ask him if he would consider it. But I don't see, there's no way it's going to pass as R4. We might as well get over that right now, because I'm not voting for it either, like Mr. Chambers.
Okay.
But we might ask them if they would consider that, and then we can forget this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. White. Ms. Fields?
Okay, and, and I have a question for, um, Mr. Spencer and maybe the fire marshal. I don't have the building code with me right now that defines what a residence is, but it was my understanding that a residence had to have a kitchen, and I, am I incorrect about that? And, and I do think that that's in the residential building code, and so I'm, I'm just, and, unfortunately, I don't have it with me, and I only have a phone that I can't read on, but would that maybe perhaps solve the problem?
In the case, like, in an efficiency apartment, I mean, you can have a small refrigerator and a hot plate, and that becomes a kitchen.
Yes, ma'am, please come up and give us your name for the record.
My name is Janice Sanders. I live one block away. Uh, what has not been mentioned here before is that the two houses right next to this one in the cul-de-sac, there's a new home that has just been built, there's one that's been there for a long time, they are both rent houses. This house on the corner could conceivably, in the future, become a rent house if this young lady over here decided to sell, which would mean if it was an R4, it could be a rent house with a second rental property right next to it. She's already put in a driveway to the back where this building is, stands right now. Now, I'm not saying that, that she's going to do this, but property can be flipped and rented or sold to someone else who will rent it. And this is some, and we're on a cul-de-sac, there are only six houses on this block.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Uh, the question, yes, come forward and... Do you want to address the, uh, the bathroom, restroom situation?
Yes, um, the reason we're here is because of water, period. We were told when you put water at all into a structure, whether it's a shed or whatever, that you have to get things rezoned. I, then, the gentleman that just spoke earlier, that's what, I was thinking the same exact thing. This is another reason we were here, is because, uh, just like the gentleman that spoke earlier on, remotely, I don't know, I forget his name, uh, this is simply, um, someone wanted to build something in a property that they own that they're going to utilize for their own purposes. That's, that's all this is, if, we just need water there. So, I mean, if you're outside and you're doing arts and crafts, or you're working, or you have a client back there, you don't need, you don't want your clients to go into your main house. I've known this, I've known Ms. Augustus for, I don't know, I've known Ms. Augustus for, for a while, and I mean, she doesn't even allow people to walk in her house with shoes on. You got to put booties on your feet before you walk around the floor. So she, this is why she wants this separate dwelling, or, I'm sorry, I said the wrong word, this separate structure, so she can actually utilize it with her clients, and she can do her arts and crafts, and she can do her Facebook postings, and also in addition to that, she can use the restroom, if she so chooses, in her, at her own property. A pool house can be used for a tiny, tiny apartment as well, if you put an air mattress on the, on the, on the, on the ground. I mean, anything can be used for anything, we just want water in a property that she owns. That's the only reason we're here. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chambers?
Uh, yes, Mr. Clifton. If you will state unequivocally that there will not be a toilet in the shed, I don't think, I don't think there's a problem having a sink. I don't think there's a problem having internet access, I don't think there's a problem having a telephone or lights, but it's the toilet that's causing the problem. So I'm just pointing that out to you, you've got commissioners that'll, that'll be more than happy to keep you just like you are and say, peace be with you, build your shed, no toilet.
Yes, sir.
But if you insist on the toilet, you're going to, I don't know that you'll necessarily get the votes you want to go where you need to go.
I understand, uh, well, I will say that to this, I'm not really trying to be in direct opposition to you, but, I mean, I've done this for a little while, and, uh, I know of several multitudes of sheds and workshops that husbands have in the backyard that have little tiny showers. I know woodworkers, I know mechanics, I know everyone that has, they little have little tiny, uh, showers back there, little tiny, um, hand washing stations and everything else, because their wife won't even let them in the house when they're outside, they're dusty, they have to take care of themselves. She's just doing a lady version of this, and I've, I know places like this in North Little Rock that are in city limits, so...
I do not doubt you one day.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve again.
I'm sorry, who?
Steve.
Steve White again.
Mr. White, yes, sir.
Hi, Sean, no toilet, but they have a shower, is that okay?
No. They have no toilet, but they want to get a toilet, give you a shower, no toilet.
Still, I would still say that we're getting close to being an apartment, but I've also got a concern that you're not zoned to have an office back there, that's, that's not something you can do. So it's not, it's not a, so we, if you want to do an office back there, we need to re-advertise that, and it needs to be built to commercial standards.
Had you liked, would you-
So that's a brand-new issue that we hadn't heard before. So it's, you can have a home office, but you can't have customers coming to it and that type of stuff.
Okay, I understand.
Right, and especially since that, especially since that's on a small street, we don't want a lot of vehicles on that street anyway.
Oh, it's nothing like that. She didn't have one kind of month.
Would you like to-
Yeah, but it's still, it's still, the big deal is, it's still conservative business, and it's not in the home, so that violates the code, even though, like you said, there's probably people in the city that have done that that just haven't gotten caught yet. But as far as, the main purpose today is that they're asking for R4 classification. So what I would call for, that if, if the applicant is going to say they can have water to it, then there's no reason for us to be voting on R4 if they're not going to have a commode or a shower, and then they would have to come back to us next month and reapply if they wanted that to be an office. So there'd be no reason to vote on this if they'll just say, no commode, no shower, you can do that, but you've got to come back next month and apply if it is going to be an outside structure that's an office. Is that correct, Sean?
Yes.
That's what I was fixing to possibly propose to you, if you wanted to postpone this until the next meeting to decide which way you might like to proceed with whether you're going to try for an office, you're going to try for a bedroom, a mother's quarter, what, you've got three or four things going on here that, and none of them at this point are permissible under the city ordinances. Mr. Chambers?
Sean.
One quick, one quick request of Sean. Sean, if it's, if it's okay, would you extend their fees to cover any new requests next month?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Clifton, this is Charlie Foster. I have a question for our staff. It appears that the existing building, which I understand they will be making an addition to, appears to be quite close to the side and rear property lines. Has the staff checked and made sure that they are outside those setback limits for accessory buildings?
The setbacks for the shed are five foot from the property line, and it appears to be five foot in each direction. The drawing, don't, don't go by our drawing, it's, it's a-
Okay.
It's, the county assessors does the property lines and then is added to an aerial, so it's not necessarily accurate, it's just a representation of what's there.
Thank you.
Chairman Clifton, this is Vandy.
Yes, ma'am.
Sean, can you mention, or I don't know if you can pass out the petition that was submitted by the neighbors, that I received a copy. Also, I've received several phone calls and, you know, rumors are rumors are rumors, and I have no idea if any of this is true, but evidently there's been talk that this structure could possibly also be used for repair and/or restore, restoring of cars, which I think would be a very unpermitted use in that area, I would hope. Also, received calls, and I personally drove down there, and the sign is against the bushes, not truly visible. So that was another comment I had from a neighbor, and it goes on and on. I think I spoke with Tim to get some clarification, but I think the R4 situation, I think we're all in agreement that, that no one is in favor of that anywhere in North Little Rock, but, well, I shouldn't say that, but in a tight cul-de-sac in this particular case. But if I'm not mistaken, in an R4, this property could be used as a daycare, if I'm not mistaken, by right, and it could also, as we've all said, be sold, if it were zoned R4, the house knocked down in a six to eight to 10-plex apartment building put there, which would be a nightmare. So as long as we're all in agreement that the R4 is off the table, then I'll shut up, but that's basically what my calls I've gotten. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve White again.
Mr. White?
Would, would you ask the applicant two things? Because we're not going to be able to vote on this because it's not, it's not applied correctly, first of all. You ask the applicant that if he would consider table in this month, get with Sean, find out exactly what he's asking, knowing that we're not going to vote for R4, because he's not going to get that, in my opinion. And, and let's, let's move on with this, because again, what he's applying for with, with the city planning is not really what he's asking for. He's asking for commercial application, and as far as voting on it today, again, if he'll just say, I'm not going to put a toilet in there or a shower in there, then there's, there's no reason to even have this on our agenda in the first place.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I would like to ask him that, and then we call the question, and he either decides if we're going to vote to table it and he can reapply, are we voted now?
Okay, thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Miss, I have proposed to you the proposition to possibly postpone this until next month. Would you consider that, or would you care to proceed today with your application as you submitted it?
Is there any mechanism whatsoever, can I, can I speak freely for a moment? Just for a moment, okay. The team members of council, neighbors that showed up, this is not a car park, it's not a car lot, it's not going to be any type of alien touchdown facility or anything where weirdness is going on, this is exactly what Ms. Augustus has told you it's going to be. It's not going to be anywhere that's, like you have people circling in and out or whatever, she may have one client a month, I mean, she's a real estate agent, but she's just the-
Excuse me, just a minute, ma'am.
This is just a minute, yeah. I understand the fears of what everyone else, what everyone is saying.
Well, here's the problem, is what you're proposing goes against the city ordinances that we have. So whether it's one customer a month or not, it's still against the city ordinance, and it's got to be presented in the proper way and voted on in the proper way. That's why I was trying to offer you the, the option to postpone until next month to see what you want to do.
Is there any mechanism, commercial or otherwise, where we can get what we're asking for, which is to have a toilet and water?
No, sir.
There is no mechanism to have this in a state and in the city of North Little Rock?
Unless it gets passed for an R4 zoning and you get a building permit to add those facilities in this building.
I see, okay.
Chairman Clifton, this is Banks.
Yes.
It appears that we're just sort of going around in circles, so, you know, my opinion would be, or suggestion would be, let's just go ahead and put it to vote, and let's move on with this, because we're where we are, and we're not, we're not getting anywhere just going around in circles, so let's, let's vote on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, this, Ms. Sanders asked to speak, this will be the last comment.
Okay, I'm going to come at it from a different angle. The house in question was in foreclosure, and from what I have read, it was bought for $67,000, is that correct? $67,000?
Ma'am, that, that has no relevance, ma'am, to what we're doing.
Well, sir, okay, but I'm thinking that she might have, and I cannot read her mind, but she might have thought because of the low price she had to pay, she would be able to add to the home, which would have been fine, as long as she didn't get to the property line too close. And perhaps, since I'm not talking with her, she found out she couldn't do that, so she wanted to extend the shed. But again, the biggest problem is, she's not going to live there forever, although I've almost lived there that long where I am. But if she ever left, it will still be an R4.
Yes, ma'am.
And we don't want it to stay R4 in that neighborhood. Someone has already tried this. Up on Rock Street, we had a man who tried to put in four container homes on a property, and we ruled him down. We don't want anything that, to change the outlook of our neighborhood. It's been there since 1958, just as it is.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
All right.
Mr. Chambers? I move to postpone for 30 days.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that it be postponed for 30 days. Any comments from any of the commissioners on postponement?
Yeah, Banks, I have a question, comment.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, this is Banks.
Yes, Mr. Banks.
Yeah, why are we postponing this?
I, I move to postpone, may I answer the question? He asked why, yes. I'm moving, Mr. Banks, I'm moving to postpone because I believe we're rushing to judgment on something that's going to be a strong negative for the applicant, and if they'll take time to meet with staff, they may come to a better solution than this rush to vote on, on R4 and get a, you know, 9-0 vote against it. I would rather they have 30 days to think about it, and then if that's where we are next month, it doesn't take any time at all to vote 9-0 against R4. I would-
Well, my only concern was that postponing something, setting the precedent of us postponing something, and the applicant doesn't want to postpone it, the applicant wanted to move forward on it, so let's move forward. I guess I don't understand.
Okay, that was my question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I make a comment? First of all, his application on R4, he's asking also for a commercial, so technically this applica, application itself is out of order, in my opinion. Is that right, Sean?
The only request is for R4 before us, so they're welcome to sit and talk about an office, but it's not going to get a business license and won't get a permit for it. But right now, it's just for R4.
So that's the only reason I would say table it for a month, so they don't lose whatever fee that they pay. But if they want to vote, if he'll come to the stand and say, we want you to vote, I will vote no again right now, and we'll move on with this, because it's not going to happen in an R4, just like every, every one of the commissioners have said.
Okay, thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Ms. Augustus, you heard, you know what the motion is on the floor, and I'm giving you an opportunity to respond your comments to that motion. Would you like to postpone this, or would, do you want to vote?
I'm not.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded with comments by Mr.-
Chairman Clifton, I'm sorry, I didn't hear her response.
I'm sorry?
What was the response when you asked?
We have not. They have agreed to postpone it, and now we're going to vote on the postponement motion made by Mr. Chambers. And seconded. And seconded. Any other comments on the postponement motion? Please call the roll.
Bellasco?
Yeah.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. The motion was passed to postpone this item until our next regularly scheduled meeting. It would be good, possibly, if you folks would get with the neighborhood association and see if you have a middle ground that you might be able to propose to the staff before this comes back, before the commission for a vote, okay? Thank you, everyone. We have some more on our agenda, if you want to stay, we'd be glad if you stayed, if you want to step out, please remove to the outside hall. Give us a couple of minutes, and we will resume, if y'all will. Okay, item number three on our agenda is rezonation number 2020-9 to rezon property from an R3 to an R4 to a C6 to allow for a mixed-use development located on Esplanade Circle. Is the applicant here? Yes, please come. Give us your name.
My name is Blake Jackson, and I'm the owner representative as well as the architect for the entire project.
Okay. Have you had any comments for or against this application, Mr. Spencer?
I had a couple inquiries, and after telling them what, what was going on, if they weren't opposed to it, they were just, okay, so it was just find out what was going on.
Okay. The, the staff does recommend approval. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Mr. Chambers? Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a question for Mr. Spencer. If this property were rezoned to C6, what is the level of buffering or screening between the C6 and the R3 and R1?
It will, once we get a site plan, it will be determined at that time, so it will, it will be a full buffer of some sort. So how, how deep it is will be determined on, is it apartments next to R3, or is it a business next to R3? So it's going to depend on the site plan at that time.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, since you are a participant in the development of the property, I would urge and caution you to be extremely generous with your buffers, and please stay completely out of them with your utilities. It's an old neighborhood, and I don't think you want to have another old neighborhood confrontation like you just saw.
Let me say two things. On the entire east side of our property, going south to north, and about half of the property on the north side is a high-power transmission line from energy, which had, which we've already experienced in the first phase, it's currently under construction, which is a 20-foot on either side. I would also say, though, that we have also master planned the whole area, and the property bordering the neighborhoods, we're also planning to do single-family residential.
Okay.
The more, the higher-density phases will be closer to River-
So you've got buffer used-to-use.
Yes, and I'm, I'm a fan of landscaping, and if you look at what we're currently building and what we built in Moll Mill, I think you'll be pleased.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes.
This is Charlie Foster. I'm asking staff, is the application for rezoning this entire development to C6, including Phase 1?
No.
No, it does not, because it's, it's, from what, we asked that question, and it's already in financing, and there's, paperwork already done on it that we can't change the zoning at this point in time.
So we're, so the application is for rezoning all phases except Phase 1, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Chambers? Yes, Mr. Clifton, it appears that, and it's noted in the comments, that the only access into this property is River Road. Does the applicant plan to connect to-
Paul Duke's.
West, Long or West?
Our property on the entire west side is bordered by Paul Duke Drive, and yes, our master plan does include what we're calling Esplanade Circle, and Esplanade Drive will connect Esplanade Circle to Paul Duke Drive. So there will be actually three entrances into the four.
This is for the fire department's purposes, are there multiple ways of getting into this property other than River Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's why I need to know, thank you. Okay, any other comments, commissioners, anyone in the audience? On the application, please call the roll.
Yes.
Bellasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Application did pass.
Thank you.
See, Mr. Spencer, he can tell you where to go, okay? Thank you. Uh, item four on our agenda today, today is our public hearing number 2020-1, to update the North Little Rock zoning ordinance. Uh, Mr. Spencer?
So, uh, I think we have our final draft here. Uh, it's been blessed by the city attorney's office and subdivision committee and, and planning staff and the barber engineering that's been helping us, uh, draft this is, seems to be satisfied with our, what we have right now. So what I'm asking is, if we have any questions, I can answer those, and then I'm going to ask, uh, going to send it to city council, uh, for the last meeting this month.
You're asking for a, a vote on this today?
Yes, please, yes.
I, um, have a comment on this. I have tried to go through the sheet that we have before us and trying to pick out, uh, what I might be able to see. The changes have been additions or deletions, and without it being redlined, to know what was there, what was taken out or added in, in no way in the world that I could, uh, start to comprehend and understand what we've changed.
I'm, we're stating it's a, it's a new document.
Sir?
It's a new document.
Yes, sir.
So, so we wouldn't be able to get to redline something, so it, it's a start from scratch. Now, it, it was based on what we had before, so, but it's, it, it, there, there is not a redline for this, because it, that started from complete scratch.
Well, we had the ordinance that we had before, that we started with, and it's been changed to the new, or, or the new document, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Like I said, I, there's no way that, that, uh, I could see that we could go in and try to figure that out without knowing what it all is that the staff does, but, uh, I have faith in the staff that, uh, they have prepared this to be for the benefit of North Little Rock, so I don't have a problem with it. So is there anyone, or is, uh, any comments from any of the commissioners on this new, uh, zoning ordinance?
Chairman Clifton?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton? Hey, this is Charlie Foster again. Uh, I know exactly what you're talking about, by trying to do a comparison of the two documents, you can't do that, and, uh, I feel miserably to try to do the same thing as you did. The, uh, so what I, what I did is, I, um, looked at this as a, a new document, and I said, okay, let me take a hypothetical project that I would be developing, and let me look and see what my zoning requirements are, you know, based upon the, uh, new document. I did that for multifamily residence and, um, uh, also office building. Uh, I found the new document to be much easier to navigate through, uh, than the old document, and, you know, for that reason, and it's very clear, uh, what the requirements are. Um, I like the new format from that, from that, for that reason.
Very good. Uh, I know that, uh, I know that there's been at least four meetings on this, at least four, is that right? Or more?
Subdivision or planning commission?
No, on the, uh, on the preparation of the new zoning ordinance.
I think this is the sixth time it's been on the planning commission agenda, and we've met five times, I think, as a subdivision committee on, on this.
And gone through it, cover to cover.
Correct.
So, uh, it has been gone through and, and I think, uh, vetted very well, so, um, any other comments?
I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made.
Second.
Mr. Clifton.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, be approved. Comments, Mr. Spencer?
Although there's no one in the audience, it is public hearing, and I'd like to ask, make, just on the record, that we've asked for any comments from the public.
Being as how this is a public hearing, uh, we do have a motion, uh, to be approved as submitted, and is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on, for, or against, uh, the passage of this zoning ordinance? Any other comments from the commissioners on the passing of this ordinance? Please call the roll.
Banks.
Yes.
Belasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Deets.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Wallace. White. Chairman Clifton.
Yes. The ordinance did pass, and it will be presented to the city council in its present form.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners, and hopefully, the next time we get to meet, we will get to see everyone's smiling faces. Any other comments? Public comment, anyone? Your motion?
No, thank you. Lou, thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, we be adjourned. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Bye, y'all.
Bye-bye.
Bye.